You never know what's going to happen.
You never.
Okay, and we call this committed a whole meeting to order. Acknowledge that the District of Tofino operates within the territory of the Tolokot First Nation. And also notice that the meeting is in video recorded and will be published on the District of Tofino's YouTube channel. Motion to adopt the agenda.
Adoption.
Second.
All those in favor? None opposed, motion carried. Adoption of the minutes to commit at the whole meeting held August 17th, 2020.
Adoption. Second.
All those in favor? None opposed, motion carried. Adoption of the minutes and special committee of the whole meeting held August 17th, 2020.
Move adoption.
Second.
All those in favor? None opposed, motion carried. Have any public comment? No delegations? Hey, correspondence, how would you like to deal with the correspondence? Starting with 6.1, I think staff has replied to Darling's letter, I believe.
I know that Nancy Cameron has replied and the writer has received a response that it would be here for council discussion, but no other responses.
Do you, Council McQuaid, did you write to?
Yeah, I also responded to Michael, to the letter writer, to Mr. Darling. I think, I think a number of councillors did, and I'm grateful that Tourism Tofino did as well. Yeah. I'm grateful that Nancy Cameron took the time to respond and to outline kind of a deeper, broken down understanding of the MRDT and what it can and can't be used for and how it's allocated. I think it was a particularly relevant question to bring up, and I was grateful for the thoughtful letter that did so. And I think that it's actually a topic that the community would be better served to understand better, so I'm glad that it's, it's being brought up kind of into a wider forum outside of council letters, so.
Should be any further action?
I just wanted to comment further, just that I appreciated Mr. Darling's, the tone of the letter and the way he brought it forward and in subsequent conversations, I reiterated to him that, that sort of civil discourse was very much appreciated at the council tables.
Okay, if there's no further actions required, move on to 6.2 regarding the community consultative group from the RCMP. Any discussion on this? And he's requesting a council member?
Yeah. So I, we did have a discussion as a council Sergeant Peppernett regarding the community consultative group. And a number of concerns have been expressed by council regarding membership and intent cultural safety facilitation. And I definitely understand that this email is to highlight the goals of the task force, but there are definitely some of those goals that run almost counter to what council was looking for, so. Is there a term of reference that we might see prior to committing a council member? Is that something that?
That's certainly something that we can ask for and have asked for and is in development, so I haven't received it yet, but council could defer making a decision until you've had a chance to look at the terms of reference. That is typical for external body appointments.
Are those terms of reference usually created with a council member present? Or are we expecting them to do the terms of reference and then jump in, like, is this a good time? Is this something we want to be in the process of, or are we simply accepting terms of reference?
That's a good question. I don't know how these groups typically structure themselves. It would be a body of the RCMP. But whether or not the chosen representatives collaborate on the terms of reference is not something I'm so clear on that I could tell you. However, if council wanted to appoint a member to work on that terms of reference, that's something I can certainly raise with Sergeant Peppernett.
My concern, being the RCMP or any official body, because their leeway for what the terms of reference can be might be a bit restrictive. You know, for instance, we may come up with a terms of reference which go to the RCMP and they just go, no way. So I'd like to get some, I would like to see some input from them about whether he expects the group to come up with the terms of reference or the RCMP's come up with terms of reference. And I would certainly be reluctant to myself to go on a committee like that till I knew that sort of thing. So maybe we should direct Sergeant Peppernett to look into that.
Sorry, I missed that.
Well, my feeling is we should direct Sergeant Peppernett to look into how the terms of reference will be structured as to whether it's going to be a consultative group or whether the RCMP is going to draw the terms of reference under that sort of mandate. Yes.
Definitely in conversation with, those are some of the concerns that, you know, contingent upon our participation, fully understanding the terms of reference and potential implications of what those might be in terms of our. And the other, in the other area that, that I had flagged in terms of conversation was the, the participation, those that would be involved in, in that consultative group. And so there are some questions that I had around that, but I think probably starting with the terms of reference might be a valuable place to be.
If this is a, a capacity issue for the RCMP, I think that there is enough interest on council to be able to help with the terms of reference. I would definitely be interested as well. I know other members are, so. I think personally, if that's part of, of the drive, like, I think council would, would be interested in helping, but yeah. I'd be more interested in putting it aside and definitely not appointing anybody until we had more of an idea what we were doing, where it was going.
Counsel Steer.
I concur with Counsel McQuaid. You know, in the, in the letter that was sent here, you know, the, the opening sentence is, it's with the purpose of the group shall be two, and then lists off the four. So I would be uncomfortable at this stage. I don't know how we would crop that in terms of.
Well, no motion needs to be made if you're, I, I'm hearing what you're saying, and certainly staff can return to Sergeant Peppernett and just say that no motion was made. And it is our, our normal practice to request it in terms of reference and, like I had in the beginning, and we can just wait until a terms of reference comes forward to have this conversation again. And I'll note to Sergeant Peppernett that there is interest in being a part of that process and understand a little bit more. Maybe I can just respond to council, you know, what, what capacity you have to be involved, and we'll see when it comes forward, how you feel about it, whether you have input or not.
I just also like to express my general support for this kind of initiative as a general support. Reaching out, working with us, I think of that initial meeting with RCMP, yeah.
I don't think there's any disagreement on that. It's just not what stepping into.
Absolutely.
So can we leave that in staff's hands, Elise, and the report back to us? Any further discussion on this before we move on? Okay, presentations and reports, sale of Gateway Residential Unit 101-605 Gibson Street. We have done reports on this, I believe.
Good afternoon. Just a kind of a short report related to the staff report here for the housing agreements and related policies that go with the sale of the unit at 101-605 Gibson Street. So just a brief note regarding the staff report. It was prepared kind of earlier, and then there was some subsequent information that was received from Mr. Scott, who's the Executive Director of the THC. And that information was not translated properly onto the report, I guess, so the report, there's nothing incorrect in the report, there's just some more information that I'll be touching on in this particular presentation. Hopefully won't be anything very confusing, and I'd also note that we will be seeing this again probably at the next council meeting, so this is more just for kind of introductory discussion purposes. So a little bit of background to the report. The unit that's in question was received by the District of Tofino in kind of conjunction with the Gateway Development a few years back. So it's been owned by, by the district for several years already. Recently, council passed a resolution supporting the sale of this unit in kind of the affordable ownership model. The proceeds are to go towards 351 Rnet development. That's kind of been working through over the past several months. Housing Agreement Bylaw will be adopted, and this housing agreement bylaw will have the housing agreement that's attached to the staff report as a schedule. And it will basically restrict ownership and kind of control the sale and resale price and, and process in a similar manner to the Sea Otter Place unit that was sold by the district in 2018. So my understanding, so it's before my time at the district, but my understanding is that, that process went fairly smoothly and then resulted in the objective that was originally stated. So we're basically trying to emulate that through this agreement. So a brief look at the housing agreement. Essentially, the agreement's designed to restrict ownership and pricing that's related to this particular unit. Both the initial sale and the subsequent resales, the unit will be price restricted. Only an applicant that meets all the requirements, that's a qualified person, may purchase the unit. That's the initial purchase as well as all subsequent resales. And it must reside in the unit. The exception to that is that rental is permitted for a maximum of 12 months within a five-year window. Maximum rental fees are specified within this housing agreement and it has to be rented to a qualified person as defined in the agreement as well. So a qualified person is somebody that has a gross household income of $83,862 or less. They've been employed in the region for at least one year by a business or B C Parks or some, some sort of operation within this area. They've lived in the region for 24 of the last 36 months, so that includes the entirety of the Albany Clackwood Regional District, and they don't own any other property. Other people are permitted to live in the units provided they are in some sort of a relationship with the qualified person, so that's marriage, cohabitating, related by blood, adopted, any of those kinds of things. So a quick look at the purchase policy as well. Essentially, this policy is outlining the method for the disposition of the unit by the district, so this would be kind of the initial sale of the unit from the district to a qualified owner. There'll be a 30-day application window, at least one open house within that 30 days. And one other thing that's kind of interesting is that additional application numbers will be granted for repeat applicants. So once you've submitted an application, you're essentially given an application number. For those who have submitted applications to the Sea Otter unit and were unsuccessful, they'll actually be granted another application number, so they'll have twice as many chances to be selected. Random draw will then be conducted after the 30-day application window. First number drawn will be offered the unit for purchase. They'll have three business days to kind of enter into a contract of sale with the Tofino Housing Corporation of the district, essentially Tofino Housing Corporation facilitating it. If no contract is finalized, then the next person on the list will get the opportunity and so forth until a contract can be established. Interesting to note, in future, a purchase waste list may be established, so this is probably a little ways off from where we are right now, but once, you know, if there comes a time, I should say, within Tofino where we have enough of these units and there's a turnover of, you know, kind of one to two units per year, they're, they're being bought and sold a little bit more regularly. It may make more sense to move away from the lottery model and towards a purchase waitlist, which is just kind of an ongoing list of people that are interested. However, at the moment, as we don't actually have that many of these units within our pool, the lottery approach seems to be the most effective improvement. So the resale policy is very similar to the purchase policy. It basically outlines the method for disposition of the unit by the future owners, so this is after the district no longer owns the unit. The THC will still be facilitating the, the buying and selling of the unit, or particularly the selling of the unit. And then the purchase policy is, is repeated through this resale policy, so we have that 30-day window where you receive applications from qualified applicants and then you'll kind of go through the lottery process in some way. Maximum sale price is determined as per change in the core consumer price index from the year purchased to the year sold. And one other thing to note is that there will be a 2% fee payable to the THC, 2% of the total sale price, that will cover the administrative costs of, of running the resale lottery. So a couple notes, changes from the Sea Otter Agreement, I believe several councillors were, were involved in that. The housing agreement, there's basically a greater maximum household income. This is just to kind of accommodate inflation over the past couple of years. And the lower rental prices, this is a smaller unit than the, than the Sea Otter unit, so I think the rental, maximum rental fee for the Sea Otter unit is about $960, $970. This is down to $925. A couple changes in the purchase policy. The applicants are going to be informed in advance of their application number for greater transparency, so I believe during the, during the original purchase policy process for the Sea Otter unit, applicants were just informed that their application had been accepted and they were within an order. They weren't actually informed of their specific number in the order, so this is just a little bit more transparency. And then with the resale policy, there's a bit of a language change. The purchase fee has been described as 2% will go to the THC. Previously, it was up to 2%, this is just a bit of a clarification, so that it will be precisely 2% that goes to the THC. So these, you know, purchase, subsequent resales, the policies, these things will be administered by the THC on behalf of the district. There'll also be signatories on the housing agreement, so that in, in future sales and resales of the unit, they will be basically the authority as they move through these kinds of processes. So policies that are related to the purchase and resale are currently approved by the DOT. This will be kind of coming up at the next regular council meeting. But these could be delegated to THC, pardon me, if deemed necessary in the future, so similar to changing from a purchase lottery to a purchase waitlist. If, for whatever reason, we have a lot of these units in five, 10 years, it may be more effective to just allow the THC to kind of have a blanket policy for resale and purchase rather than coming to council every time. Again, that's just a note of interest at this point, maybe something to consider in the future. So next steps, we will be introducing the housing bylaw at the next council meeting, also introducing the policies for adoption at the next council meeting. And then the housing bylaw can be adopted at a subsequent council meeting following that. That will kind of allow the THC to initiate the, the process of selling and kick off that 30-day period where, with hopefully the result of somebody in town being able to purchase the unit. So if there's any questions, I can speak to them.
Any questions, Peter?
You might have said this, but I might have missed it. We've been looking at the THC fairly closely, the housing agreement there recently, so this is basically same as stuff. The THC for District Lot 114. Been looking fairly closely at the housing agreement for that, and in terms of the purchaser is, is very similar to the rental type of qualifications to.
That's correct. So we have this idea of the qualified person that may have these particular things, sort of conditions that they have to fulfill, and they're essentially the same. Slightly different because this is a purchase as opposed to a rental, but the same general idea, they have to be, have lived in this area two to the last three years, employed in this area, not own any other property and have a maximum household income in order to qualify. Okay.
Thanks. Anyone else? Someone like to move the recommendations?
I'll move the report titled "Sale of Gateway Residential Unit 101-605 Gibson Street, dated September 28th, 2020, be received for information."
And it by council law? Any further discussion? I'll call the vote. All those in favor? None opposed, motion carried. On that, Peter?
I think, I think that's it for me. I mean, as far as I know.
ACRD, OCP zoning, that will speak.
Yeah, I'll send Mr. Rogers in for that one. Peter?
Thanks, Peter.
No idea what's going on. Can't hear out there, and people forgot our headphones, so we just randomly hope to hear anything. Not an awesome system.
Next.
That would help.
Swiss clocks, little people.
What do you mean, ACRD zoning?
Correct.
I do not have a report. Or a presentation. I have a report. So basically, we're in a pre-referral phase where the ACRD has put out this information. We've looked at it, responded to them in the pre-referral, wanted to inform council that you know what's going on and to give you a heads up that they'll be coming back to us in a month or two with a formal referral. And so if there's anything in their report or in their pre-coach change that you want us to dig into, you know, you can take a look and then just sort of get it back to staff and we'll take a look at anything in particular.
I love the pre-referral before the referral.
Yeah, a bit confusing at first, because we never heard of that before, but in talking with ACRD staff, that's just how they do it, so.
Right.
I did have a question. There is a recommendation that the ACRD OCP designates a habitat DP in the Long Beach area. And I didn't understand, were we changing our wildlife management area to match theirs or theirs to match us, or do they just meet somewhere?
It's, it's an interesting question, and it's interesting because from the junction to the north of Clackwood Town and the rest of the ACRD areas, there's no actual OCP in place. And so though, spending too much time trying to figure it out, I don't think they can even add a DP to an area that doesn't have an OCP in the first place. And so I think it brings us back to that larger question of, is that something that we'd like the ACRD to look at into the future? Extend it or not, perhaps we're happy the way it is now. Banfield is similar to us. They don't have an OCP on that part of the ACRD lands either. But the intent behind the DP conversation was, they do have a conservation DP in the south. And I, the point to me is that if we were to look at an OCP, would we want to ask them to see if we can move that development permit all the way to match up with the DPs that we have in Tofino and, and the wildlife management area from the province? But I think the first step, my assumption is the first step would have to be adopting an OCP here, which is a bit of a project. And I did ask the ACRD planning staff about that potential, and they see, the staff that will seem to be fairly resistant to extend, extending their OCP all the way up, or creating any OCP.
Would there also be consultation with First Nations?
Yes. Yeah, the Fisher community plans, and I'm, unfortunately, I'm speaking from a local perspective, which is a little bit different than the regional government, but I believe the consultation stuff is the same, and it's a requirement to talk to First Nations.
Awesome. Thanks for the clarity on that.
I was just curious, on some of the maps, I was trying to, some of those areas, like up the top of Bedwell Clackwood Wilderness Resort and those, I wasn't able to find within the maps, and there were a few. The associated areas and the, I know that there is just tax changes on those, but I was just curious as, did you see it in there or did I just miss it?
I didn't actually go as far up as Bedwell, like, so when I reviewed it, I reviewed it for anything that was, you know, essentially touching the borders of District Tofino, and then some of the ones that require the jump off, you know, Vargas.
Yeah, that was kind of the implication was somebody.
I, I, if, if you, if you, if you'd like, you can email me and I'll, I'll, and they're being fairly responsive, so I could fire off an email to Amy and the ACRD and ask for her to sort of comment on that. From, I believe the, those zones were the same as one on Vargas and one on, on Mears, and there wasn't anything substantial changing there. I asked a lot about, actually, the one I did ask, what was, you know, how do you, how does the ACRD review zoning changes for places offshore when it comes, when they have to park in Tofino?
Exactly.
And basically, that's the, they're only managed decisions based off our referral back on parking.
Right.
So that's how they make the manage decisions here, is what we say about parking, so.
And the other curious one that I've always been curious about is Frank Island, of course, and that, that was actually a change, the RU through, whatever.
Yeah, we might get a cannabis.
Grow up.
I was going to mention.
They're going to take a look at that first.
Something I've heard, but yeah. I'm just curious why that was never in the District of Tofino or why we, is there?
I don't, I don't, no, I don't.
Yeah.
I did learn, though, this was interesting, I don't know if I meant it to our report or not, that the area south of us, so the part without any OCP adjacent to the inlet is all P2, and it was, and if you look at the zoning, you're allowed to have a campsite there, but it can only be a campsite if it's a public campsite. So that land, according to Mike Burke from the ACRD, was held in trust, the assumption that it was going to become a part of the park. So that's, because one of my questions was, oh, you're changing the parks, that, you know, that's going to affect us, you know, people. Yes, I figured, and he said, no, in the zoning, it actually restricts it to certain types of use, and I asked why. Very interesting.
Is that on the inlet side or the?
It's the inlet, I believe, though, I think it might be, I, I think, if I look at, if I'm just trying to remember, I think it's, and it might be on the inside too, but it's definitely everything highway east. Sort of between the airport and Tofino. Basically adjacent to the park boundaries.
There's a strip of land between the park and Tofino running down that, okay.
That's probably. That'd be part of it, I think. I think it's, I think it's, it's much larger, but you're exactly right, yeah, that's, that's part of there, so. I also suggested them think about a regional growth strategy at some point, and they just laughed and said, then you're going to ask to absorb more land, and I was like, well, I don't think that's. Anyhow. It's a different world.
I'm wondering if Frank Island should be in the District of Tofino, what would it? Does that make any sense?
I think it would make some sense, obviously, in just in terms of jurisdiction and how it's dealt with. You know, we know we have an issue there with people that have been there now have nowhere to park. There's no spaces for them. That, that rights been enjoyed there for, for decades, so maybe it would help us a little bit there. Maybe we'd be able to develop a permit on there for protection. I, again, question, any question you have, I would be happy to forge up to ACRD staff in advance of the referrals.
We are having a West Coast Committee, ACRD West Coast Committee here in this office on October 7th, so anyone who would love to come to that, feel free.
Unless, unless there are questions.
So email your questions, Aaron, and leave it in your hands, so. Got a motion to move the recommendation?
I'll move the report titled "ACRD OCP Zoning, dated September 28th, 2020, be received for information and discussion."
Second.
I'll call the vote. All those in favor? None opposed, motion carried.
I can't.
Update on climate change and energy action plans.
So this report comes to Community Hall based on a resolution passed by council in 2018. And it's a bit of an update on what we've been doing with climate and energy over the last decade and where we might be heading. Yep, so between 2010 and 2020, we developed a community energy plan, an official community plan, which had some energy and climate visions included. The vision to action in 2013, sort of setting a broader goal of sustainability within the district. We undertook a number of small projects, purchasing electric vehicles as well as installing charging stations at this location. Some time ago, we undertook an energy audits for our facilities, and for a while, we're, we're operating a solar-ready program in the district. More presently, and a little bit sort of in the last year or two, we've been improving the multi-use path. That's intended to try to offer options for people who want to get out of their vehicles. We've been funding a seasonal shuttle. We've built multimodal transportation plan, which at its base was intended to reduce emissions of greenhouse gases. We've been working with the Albany Clackwood Regional District Solid Waste Plans. The waste supply treatment plant was intended to have heat recovery system and pull up the bio solids so that they wouldn't end up in the ocean. The floodplain bylaw and step code, so we adopted step code last year and will be adopting a new level this year and a further level a year after that. In 2021 and into the future, again, we're continuing to look at the regional transit. Again, that would support mode shift from cars to transit or cycling. We're looking at developing climate change mitigation and adaptation plans, something council will see through the budget presentations for 2021 to 2025. We're looking to improve our walkability of downtown sidewalks and parking. That's some products coming forward from Engineering Public Works. Official community plan 2020 will also include. Official community plan 2020 will also include a number of climate policies. We're looking to, again, another project coming out of Engineering Public Works will be looking at our district facilities and ensuring they're sustainable and resilient. The West Coast landfill is currently working on organic expansion with curbside pickup. I think potentially scheduled for 2022, I believe. And then upgrading district infrastructure in terms of more charging stations, parking, streetlights that are energy efficient and a fleet management program. And so, so over the years, we've, you know, we've attempted to do this work through grants, you know, outside of our desks and pick away where we can. And haven't done a terrible job, but we think we're coming to a time where maybe an overall strategy might be better approach and provide some efficiencies in terms of grant applications and tying this all together. The 2021 to 2025 financial plan will include a number of the items I mentioned today, including the sort of larger climate mitigation and adaptation strategy, which may be the umbrella for this approach. And that, at this point, it's basically engineering and planning are working together to start bringing these forward. In the past, it had been mostly to do with planning. And again, it was mostly grant dependent and we had staff to undertake it. And now with Mr. Work being here and his team, you know, this happening public works engineering, allowing us to work together. And so we should have a little bit more steam in the engine to achieve some of our goals. That's an odd analogy. It's like a desert revolution analogy. Anyways, that is my brief report. I just wanted to, I'll have to take any questions.
Thank you. I really appreciate reading it and kind of seeing that all in one spot. And I just had one question about, should, should or have you thought about the tree bylaw fitting into this or is it?
You know what happened, but that's a great point. It's tree bylaw and that, you know, development permits that we're considering definitely feed into that adaptation or more to the mitigation aspect of it. And I will, yeah, that's definitely one that could be on this list.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Anderson.
Definitely support working on a strategic plan or putting, putting some planning behind climate change action.
Question for Elise, I think, is this going to be referred to our strategic planning session?
You could refer it to your strategic planning session. I think right now it's being referred to the 2021 budget process. Is that correct?
The climate change and adaptation plan is definitely in there. We're still trying to figure out what the sort of boundaries of that are. And then Fraser also has a number of projects that he's going to be introducing, you know, that are more structure based. So probably is best looked at it. I know for sure we'll be looking at it at council. It's one of our bigger projects. So that might be the time to discuss it.
Climate change currently is one of the five, six categories in your strategic plan. And so that would come up certainly during the session when you review the categories that exist right now versus what you'd like to see. Duration of return.
Counselor Sted.
Yeah, Nick, thanks, Eric. With the climate change adoption, adoption, the, a few things, eh? When we do refer to budget process, you know, I just continue to have, and this isn't, this is Community of the Hall. So I will bring it up here is where I just have these problems with the fact that small municipalities such as ours that, you know, want to be moving forward on these are stymied by resources, physical as well as financial. And, and in our budget process, you know, we still have to be looking to the province for the sustainable funding models that, that'll allow us to continue these types of projects. So I'm always adverse at, you know, us, us being the ones, which is great. And we should be doing it because, you know, there are those three climate deniers that are left. You know, we will be able to probably convince them that this is the right way to go. But I still am uncomfortable with, with us taking that, the resources that are going to be necessary and the financial implications that surround that. And I mean, and this isn't the place where we're going to make that discussion. But in that budget process, you know, you're going to present something that's going to say, here's the cost of this. And it's going to, you know, either fall on taxpayers, municipal property taxpayers, rather than a strategy or a sustainable funding model from, from the province or the fits for that, whoever it might be. And so anyways, I just want that to be, you know, in mind when we come to looking at the budget process, moving, moving something as important as this for, it'll certainly be in our strategic plan, no doubt. How we might address and might come out of that strategic planning sessions. But something maybe as, as I'm sure you will be involved in crafting of this to keep in mind.
Yeah, without, I haven't spent a lot of time on this one yet, but it's, I'm assuming that we'll be looking for funding, outside funding to support whatever we put in. So most likely through Federation of County Municipalities and the agreements and funds. And I think that gets announced the next couple of months from the federal government. But I would hope that we could at least half this could be funded by grants. I haven't started looking yet, but I know that in, in doing similar types of projects like the MMTP and Vision to Action, both which were funded out of 3FM, there's, there are definitely streams of grants there. And so once Fraser and I have sort of put a finer point on the project and we're still kind of going back and forth on it, then maybe then we'll start looking for what that grants might be and, and what year that might be eligible to do so. I, I can't remember now, I'm talking ahead, if we put since 2021 or 2022. Originally split over the two years, but I can't remember if we shifted it to 2022. But I'll, I'll look into that for sure. And I do, I do, I hear you saying.
I mean, it's one of those where we apply for grants, we, we can cross our hands and hope. And, you know, there's, there's got to be a more sustainable way of municipal property taxes. Anyways. Anyways.
Counselor Anderson, we had another question.
I think my question was answered in that discussion. It was about whether we could get funding for the planning.
Plus the latest on the landfill, when is it supposed to close?
I haven't heard. I know that's organic diversion is, is intended to delay that, but I haven't heard a closure date. I don't, I think Fraser and Bob have been having more of those discussions. I haven't really been involved. And I don't know, Bob, are you there?
I, I am here. It's, it's a, it's something that's still under review by the regional district. There's no, I, I think that, you know, the current plan is for the landfill to be open forever and a day. Just about current administration and elected officials with the ACRD are, are examining the wisdom of that, I think with a mind to consider closing it sooner rather than later.
Any more questions, Aaron? We don't need a motion to receive this, do we? Hey, moving on. The COVID-19 immediate recovery phase report from Office Services. It's a presentation at least.
Yes.
Your turn. You can, Mr. Rogers.
Watch the hockey now on the football.
Enjoy that sound like that. Goodbye.
You do.
Good afternoon. This is a lengthy report. I apologize for the length, but there has been a lot that's happened in the last few months. So the outline of my presentation today will just be a brief background. And then we'll go into the recovery action plan, what's been done so far, what kind of indicators we've had to conclude the initial recovery phase and the feedback we perceived on, on the planning and on the actions as well. And then looking at the transitional recovery phase, as well as task force discussions that were outside of the recovery framework that are in your package for your consideration. So a little bit of background, as we all know, in February, the World Health Organization declared an outbreak of a new coronavirus in Hubei Province. And then somewhat later in February, they determined that it was a public health emergency of international concern. And as the district has done in other large scale emergencies, we developed a novel coronavirus disease response plan to strengthen our preparedness at the local level. And we activated a Level One in the EOC. And then once it was declared a pandemic by the WHO, we did elevate our response to a Level Two in the EOC. By April, while we were still in the response phases of this pandemic, two task forces were set up by the mayor and they were an economic recovery and a community health task force with somewhat different membership and terms of references, terms of reference. And then by May, we saw the province release the BC restart plan. And we approved our own recovery action plan with input from those two task forces, EOC members and other district staff. And then by late June, I think it was June 24th, we entered the phase that we're in now. And that's phase three of the BC restart plan. And both of the task forces merged into one community recovery task force to sort of lend that more holistic lens to what we were trying to undertake as a group. The recovery action plan that was developed in consultation with those sort of stakeholders noted there is a fairly comprehensive document, but it's also a living document. So it's been added to several times. We're on version three right now. And it's an action plan with objectives. So it has sort of a table as, it's not even an appendix. It's very much part of the plan with a list of actions to be undertaken, whether by district staff, the EOC or an outside community agency. And the purpose of the plan was to sort of structure our recovery under the framework provided by the province. Now, we know that we weren't eligible for DFA. This event is not eligible for disaster financial assistance. And that was one of our planning assumptions when we began the recovery action plan. So it was amended after that to reflect that it would be mostly district funds used to support the actions. And to date, not much of that money has been used. It has been done basically by staff time or partnering with other agencies. So that's good news. And the recovery plan also spans these two different recovery phases. We've got the immediate, the short term phase that we're in right now and hoping to conclude. And the transitional, so the medium to long term phases. The actions that we undertook as a group and as a community were very wide ranging. And some of those happened at the task force table, or at least they sort of were brought forward to the task force for discussion. And some happened outside of the task force. So there was a lot of community activity happening to support public health, community wellness and individuals and businesses, just that happened organically as, as it does happen in a disaster situation. So while district staff were focused on the resumption of municipal services, the task force really focused on supporting the economic recovery and the psychosocial recovery strategies among other local organizations trying to coordinate those. So here is sort of a snapshot of some of the actions that were undertaken in partnership with the task force. There's an online one stop shop of information for the public. The West Coast Economic Impact Survey happened early on and we hope to see that done again by the Chamber of Commerce later this winter. The DECO program was appreciated by businesses and undertaken with support of the district through the TLBCC. We have a zoning amendment bylaw. We had the pop-up parks. There was a lot of communication going out jointly with other organizations. So we did multiple press releases jointly with Tloquit, Hazit, Hashquit, as well as our neighbors to the south in Ycuit, Ycuitat and Toquat. And yeah, I won't go through all of them. But to sort of note again, there were many actions that took place outside of the task force. So I just want to highlight that many people were working on recovery and still are. And so that extends to West Coast Community Resources Society, who is offering or was and still is offering loans of iPads to seniors, pre-counseling sessions offered by the hospice society, that kind of support is, is there and didn't need our help, which was great to see. So as we are now looking at a report to conclude this immediate phase, just wanted to go over what those indicators that staff in the EOC look at to understand where we are in this process or in this emergency, where we are. And this is a very difficult emergency to put timeline on or sort of understand how you move from phase to phase because not too much has actually changed for us. But what we can say is if these health indicators look substantially different, I might not be in front of you today. So I can't tell you that these are static numbers. These are obviously evolving public health statistics. But if they look dramatically different, I think we would be responding much differently as well. So to know that there are two active cases as of September 24th within our region gives us some level of an indication of how well the public health measures are being implemented and followed by the public. Governments and public services, this is also a significant indicator of a return to normalcy in our community. So most regular municipal services are back up and running. We have the return of students to schools. Responding agencies have indicated that they have an adequate supply of PPE, although there's a little asterisk there that there is a notable increase in call volumes for mental health and substance use calls for both BCAS and the Tofino hospitals. But those are not related to COVID. So that's just sort of an aside to note that this has been an exceptionally difficult summer for our responding agencies. And this was reiterated time and time again at our task force meetings. For economic recovery, which is something we looked at quite a bit in the task forces, one of the key indicators of a tourism economy is the destination's occupancy rate. And so here I'll pause to note that Councilor Law did come forward and sort of indicate to me that there is a mistake in my report. And that was in Appendix Three. It showed some occupancy numbers that were collected by a business called Air DNA. And it collects occupancy for the Airbnb, the vacation rental sector in our community. And the way that they were gathering data really gave a false impression of what was happening in that industry. So that will be removed from the next iteration of the recovery action plan. But so let's just focus right now on the resort occupancy indicators because we feel quite comfortable with where these numbers are at and what they indicate to us. They are only a few of the fixed roof accommodation providers in our community, but they are representative. So looking across, you can sort of see what's happening there. The first line is 2020, below that is last year's occupancy numbers. And then the percent change beneath, and you can see a big gap in April and May when there were resort closures. And then still just a significant change in June where a 51% decline from 2019 and then sort of slowly ticking up after that. And the, the industry does expect the shoulder seasons to look comparable what they did to last year. So it has been slowly picking up the whole summer through.
Please.
Yeah.
Could you just elaborate on what that mistake was?
Sure. So in the recovery action plan, there's a section that sort of talks about the economy. And I think I note the change in fixed roof accommodation of a resort occupancy. And then below that, I talk about, the report talks about Airbnb or vacation rental occupancy. And the numbers that were gathered showed 100% occupancy in the month of April, a 90% occupancy in May. And then some other, those are the two real outliers. And those numbers were such a red flag for us looking at that. How could that be possible? We just know anecdotally so many people had closed their businesses that it didn't quite fit what we knew to be true. And it really raised questions about how that data was being gathered, whether it was understanding when a host blocks off their accommodation versus when it's booked by a visitor. So there's still some digging to be done into how that number is gathered. And, and so we're just not comfortable leaving it in the report.
Thanks.
Feedback. So this conversation about ending the first phase of recovery has happened already with a few groups. We've taken this to the EPMC. We've taken it to the task force and then staff have also discussed concluding this phase of our recovery action plan. And we hope to see more consultation with the Chamber of Commerce about the effectiveness of the actions that we undertook. In general, those groups agreed that while the immediate COVID-19 actions were helpful and very much appreciated, the community priorities have shifted somewhat from where we were a few weeks, or sorry, months ago when, when the plan was developed. So there was, I would say wide, yeah, I'm comfortable saying there was a wide consensus that the priority for district staff's time should be to resume municipal day to day operations and dealing with the impacts of visitation, how that appeared this summer and preparing for next year. And not necessarily focused on recovery from this pandemic. It's really a forward looking request that we're seeing from most groups. Many of the factors which also contributed to that sense of busyness and frustration, we can acknowledge that there has been. We can acknowledge that there's been a large amount of frustration in our community around some of those newer trends or maybe ongoing trends that we saw highlighted this season are being considered by staff now in the 2021 budget process, including beach fire regulations, which I know you have on your agenda tonight to discuss. Bylaw fine amounts, parking management solutions at various locations in the district, enforcement and public works resources, communications and potentially an advisory planning commission focused on providing input into land use decisions about commercial accommodation. So now moving into the transitional recovery phase where we end most of those initial recovery actions. What we will focus on as a team is improving our communication with the public. So that's making sure that the public health messaging is not lost. We are not creating a lot of new messaging right now. We're really just trying to repeat what's out there and make sure we're prepared for any kind of outbreak in our community and how we would communicate with the public should that eventuality happen. And then evaluating our organizational response. So like I said, with you know, Long Beach Chamber of Commerce, we'll be asking them, were the things we put in place this year helpful to you and should we be doing that again next year? Likely we're looking at a very similar pandemic scenario for next summer. So we want to know what worked and what didn't work. And any actions that come out of that will be identified in weekly coordination calls. Those are public health actions. So whether or not we need to support as a region, as something comes up, we do have these weekly coordination calls happening organized by EMBC and chaired by Dr. Kerry Marshall. So we'll sort of have that communication link ongoing. And maybe I'll pause there. So that, that was the initial recovery phase. And if there are any questions about that, I'm happy to answer that now before we go into what else was discussed. Cause there were several things that were discussed sort of outside of recovery that's bringing to you. Good.
And I just want to comment on back, I should have brought up actually there. But when you were talking about COVID and the mental health increase this year and saying that it's not related to COVID. And I just found saying that so strongly because I feel like it kind of, a lot of it was related and anxiety that came up. So.
Thank you. So what I meant to say, thank you for pointing that out, was that the calls that BCAS and the presentations at the ER were in general not physical health related calls. They were mental health calls. So yes, they could have been attributed to stress regarding COVID-19 or increased substance use because of COVID-19. But the calls themselves were not that increase we might've expected from presentations of COVID-19 in our community. So yes, you're right, they are totally related. They just weren't the physical, you know, emergency that I may be infected with this pandemic disease. Yeah. Thank you for clarifying.
Any more questions?
Just to dig into that a little deeper. The emergency room and ambulance service calls. Was, was it more accident related or, or mental health related? Or more focused?
I don't think I can answer that without it in front of me to know, but I can certainly reach out to BCAS and Tofino General Hospital to get the breakdown of their statistics. I'd say what I'm presenting now is an anecdotal increase from both of those agencies, those responding agencies telling us very strongly that that's what happened. But I don't have, I don't have the breakdown.
It'd be interesting to know if, if we did have less visitation, if there was actually an increase in need of those services.
Yeah, I can certainly ask them for a bit more detail.
Spend a lot of time.
Okay. I mean, I. Sure. So the next just section of just a few slides is a thematic summary of the things that were discussed at the task force meetings that don't neatly fall into recovery. But they were discussed often enough that we felt it was important for council to hear it. So I've just noted the themes in the next few slides. And I think in your report, they're in appendix two, there are some staff comments below them. But happy to hear any of the discussion or if you'd like staff to action any of these themes in any other way. That would be the purpose of bringing them forward to you now. Yeah. So the themes, just read them out and you can stop me if you'd like to discuss. Advocacy for increased public health, wellness and safety resources is needed from all levels of the community. And this would sort of correspond to that anecdotal increase in the use of our responding services. Fire didn't see that increase, but those sort of health services did. Frequent discussion occurred regarding limits to further commercial accommodation. Erin Rogers, the manager of community sustainability, did give a presentation about the upcoming OCP review. But there were several discussions about potential for a advisory planning commission. And that's sort of a tool that we have in our toolbox that we don't take advantage of here in Tofino, where a group of citizens can be appointed to review certain types of planning applications, kind of like the DRP does for design or for certain development permits. And this could be for commercial accommodation or however else council wanted to get more citizen involvement. Communication about respectful travel and community expectations requires focused campaigns before and during the summer busy season. I think this theme is very much targeted to or aimed at tourism Tofino. And I think we all heard that they stopped their advertising campaigns at a certain point during the summer season. But several times the task force did bring out that it would be helpful to not only promote the destination, but also the expectations of our community. So through our representative on the board or through council discussions, you may want to discuss how to inform visitors before they come here about our expectations and whether district resources need to be put towards that, if that's your wish, or whether that's something that you expect tourism to be known to take on. Opportunities for discussion between the business community and Clackwith Sound First Nations leadership and representatives were appreciated and regularly discussed by the task force. So we did organize a few specific business to leadership meetings with Haasit and Heshquit First Nation regarding the closure of those territories to tour operators. Although that's not typically the district's role, it was regularly discussed at the task force as well as promotion of or consideration of the Tloquit First Nation Travel Parks Allies certification program. And then there were just some general themes of noted lack of understanding within our community. And one of those came to your agenda today with the letter from Michael Darling. Not that I think he misunderstood the MRDT, but definitely questions were raised around how those funds are used. So we may look to this for future communication. The recommendations in your report are two. There is to conclude the immediate phase of the community recovery task force. And then staff would just like to hear if you had any considerations from the discussion themes that I just outlined.
Can you just extend a bit on that limits to commercial accommodations? Are you saying limiting the amount or limiting the type or both?
Both were discussed. Yeah, I think earlier on, so not that long ago, there was quite the impression that the community was discussing outside of the task force limits to commercial accommodation growth. So not necessarily just commercial zoning in general, but commercial accommodation. These questions about what can we handle as a region? And there are many reasons that our region seemed busier than normal, even though the occupancy numbers don't necessarily bear that out. And I think the task force was responding to that feeling of busyness and feeling of being quote unquote overrun by a different type of visitor this year. So it just, it happened to come up quite a bit about the limits to growth of our region.
I mean, I think that's, that's a theme that has not just 2020, but has, has come up within the community context for many, many years. This is not in isolation for sure.
Not at all. This is not new. Many of these are not new.
I'm just surprised that rather than the same commercial accommodations, surprised we don't just say development. Especially in light of the fact far and we haven't got a liquid waste management plan. Still, you know, questions about how much more do we have?
I think at least maybe touched a bit on, you know, within that task force that was somewhat reactive to the 2020 situation. But I think probably the broader discussion, you could substitute commercial accommodation with, with development in general for that broader discussion. I think this was somewhat reactive in nature.
I agree.
Cause that's, that's a topic I would like to see brought up in the strategic planning.
Well, that's exactly, you know, what I broke down. Many of those themes corresponded with many of the issues that have come up previous in our strategic planning. And I think this will be, well, having many of those are concurrent and would be nice. You know, when we come to our strategic planning to be able to refer back to the most recent, in a sense, community consultation on that and how that may apply to our strategic plan.
Yeah, I really appreciate the discussion around commercial growth and actually development as well. And I think my personal request would be to, you know, have a careful look at the situation of, of I would call over tourism or the feeling of over tourism and where does it rest? Is it, I know CBT put out a report and it was the number of tourists per compared to number of residents and ours was off the charts. Like that was two years ago, it's 400 to one. And I assume now it's probably, you know, 500 to one, who knows? But so that isolating the, the issue, you know, it's not necessarily, it's, you know, where, where are the problems and how do we actually mitigate that issue? So I really look forward to that discussion here and with staff.
Or 100 to one over the course of the year, I imagine.
It was over the course of the year. Yeah, yeah, that's right. But I think the point was that the provincial average for an RMI town was 100 to one. And we're far in excess of that. That was two years ago. So.
Imagine if that happened to a larger place like Vancouver.
But I do, I do look forward to seeing that discussion.
Any comments?
Yeah, I am. I, I think it's a funny thing to say that it was like a pleasure to take part in the recovery task force. But, but I was really proud of the role that the district of Tofino played in convening it. And, you know, I, I did want to give particular thanks to our manager of corporate services for her guidance, facilitation and reporting out. There were so many points in our early recovery efforts that the discussions and suggestions of the task force were playing out in real time in our community and the efforts of the district staff and at least to knit together that concern and communication so seamlessly. I don't think should be forgotten. So communicating out to the community took a huge step forward in COVID. And for that, I'm particularly grateful. And I know it wasn't a really small feat for, for you or anyone at the district to wear so many hats at once. So I just wanted to extend a particular thanks for the guidance that you gave. Yeah, I think councilor law brings up like a really interesting point about numbers and about feelings. And I think quite often as counselors, we go out into the community and we come back to this table with ideas about what we've heard. It was really interesting for me to sit at a table with those people working together so that they weren't giving me their ideas or, or feedback in isolation. And I was bringing it here. It was a collaborative group that I don't think, I, I think it should not be undervalued. Having a group of citizens concerned, thoughtful, engaged citizens at a table, not just in a recovery like situation, but as a general guiding body for us in Tofino. I think it was really valuable and that strengthening the dialogue between all of those cohorts brought about some like incredible communications and ideas. And I think one of the particular strengths that this task force had was holding simultaneously immediate recovery actions with a plan to build back better. And I think sometimes when, when we start talking about, you know, limiting growth or, or beach fires or MRDT or RMI or all of these things, we forget that like those immediate recovery actions and these long-term ones are built back better for us. And that continuing on with that as a council into strategic planning and into other committees like, you know, land advisory or, or tourism advisory committees, I think is really important. And I don't want to lose momentum. So I do understand the, the policy recommendation that this task force come to a conclusion. And I think you're right, we've moved out, out of the prescribed recovery stage that it would fulfill. But I am interested to see outside of kind of that land based committee, what is available for us to reach out to the community and have these same conversations on an ongoing basis that have the same, you know, ability to have immediate effect on, on council and to take the temperature of a community in a more meaningful and, and perhaps more consistent way. So thanks.
What's your stand?
Well, you just took care of it, I know. But I, I mean, I, at least I, that was the top thing on here was to, to thank you for an incredible amount of work, coordination. And I don't know if the general public or even this council didn't realize how much went into hurting the kittens. I mean, it was, it was a tremendous effort and it did not go unappreciated. Some of the things that for me from that was the, the takeaways that I felt particularly important. I won't reiterate the ones that Councilman McQuaid went over. Then the ones that, that for me stood out were the bridging of communication between sort of the business community, the public health community, and the ability to have that conversation, to understand those different perspectives and how they, you know, how they transmit through the community. So that was incredibly valuable as well as that bridging once again between our, our regional neighbors. And I, and I think of Haasit and Tloquit and, and ACRD and to a minor degree and some of the other, and Ycuit. And that, how important that, that communication was. And it was interesting because we, we had focused on the elected and, and some of our regional neighbors, the elected. But it also was very important to hear the, the other form of governance in those, in those communities, which was the hereditary side, which, which was maybe one area that I'm sure we will talk about later, how important that is to for us as a council to maybe have that discussion at the two levels of governance that the elected as well as the hereditary component there. So that, that was brought out for me. And then the, the really the long-term benefits that I see and I, and I already see the, those collaborative communications paying out already in, in terms of the relationships that were built through that task force. And we're already getting letters from members of the task force talking about the, how it was very moving for them and how the experience was incredibly positive. I don't know if they, if everybody gets to see those, but yeah. But, but it was, it was very heartening to see as well. And I won't go on, but just, just to say that, I don't know, pleasurable wasn't the first word that came to mind, but the importance of the, of that, of that work. The, the only, the interesting thing for me was I did struggle in the beginning with, a lot of it was in, in a response sort of mechanism as opposed to, I think of recovery. And I had to, had to deal with that in my own mind, how we were responding to many of these things. And simultaneously in a sense, talking about recovery. And I guess this is what our next sort of phase is. Anyways, thank you.
I just want to add my voice of appreciation for all your work and particularly, I won't reiterate all the, the things that are mentioned, but particularly at a time when you lost your assistant and this fell on your desk and you had that to cover off too. Yeah, you're looking a bit more relaxed these days. And yeah, but very much appreciated and excellent job done. Yeah, I think you did a great job.
All around. That's great. Very appreciated. We, we were a really great team. We, we had an amazing staff effort and we still do. This is an ongoing effort. So I don't want to give the impression that Tofino is done with the pandemic. Seriously not.
I do want to just. I do, I do want to just concur with councillor McQuaid that I really hope that something like a community consultative group comes out of this, that we can keep going with that, that momentum to, to have the community have a voice. I'd just really like to see that happen somehow in some way. It was a really great thing.
There are ways in those of UCC committees struck by council. And it's certainly something that staff could be directed to look into further. The, the point of this report was not to suggest something totally new, but I'm hearing around the table, there's, there's interest and at the, at the task force, I can't, I can't really reiterate enough that everyone really felt appreciative of the process. So if that is council's interest to see a, a community committee, it will, it was difficult to put a box around what we were discussing at the table. And so I'd like to hear a little bit more about what function you'd like that committee to play or which types of decisions should be referred to it. As you had a discussion earlier about terms of reference are quite important to keep a group on track and to make sure the membership is representative, but not exclusive. So if, if council does want to see that kind of thing come forward, we can certainly discuss that.
Yeah. And it was a caution that I wrote down about, I mean, I'm, I'm very much supportive of, but very cautionary about in our meetings. It was, these were very task oriented people and to have a clear mandate and a very clear set of references measurable as well as actionable. People don't want to meet just for the sake, these are all very busy people. And like I said, they were, they don't want to meet just for the sake of meeting. I'm generalizing and speaking out of turn maybe, but that was one of the big cautions that any advisory that we're not meeting just for the sake of meeting. At least laterated on.
Well, I was going to say something very similar to that. The reason I think that there was an immediate focus and around COVID, around the impacts of that, and that really kept the, the task forces on track and, and accomplishing something. So it's, I'll just echo what councillor Steer just said. The, the whole focus is really important for any sort of group that's going to advise a council.
Councillor.
Yeah, I in suggesting that these conversations are ongoing and that they are not lost for council input, I am always reticent to strike or suggest striking any more committees. I am aware how heavy they can be on, on staff input and time. And I mean, I'm regular town halls or communication of that sort would also serve to have, you know, some, some sort of community voice. But I would err on having something to, I would, I would regret to err on having something too general. But one of the more effective committees that I've been on has been the design review committee, where, you know, a very certain instance of a very certain necessity for very certain input is required. And that committee is convened and, and met for those instances. And, you know, be it, there, there is a suggestion here about a, I believe, a land advisory or.
Yeah, it's a, I can't remember what it's called. Advisory Planning Commission.
Yeah. So something, something like that, I think would be really effective. I have, you know, I, I think something incredibly specific would be probably the most valuable coupled with something, you know, a council commitment to do something more general regarding community conversations can also balance that out. But, but I am, I am reticent to, it, it was very difficult to keep this. It, it was at times difficult to keep this committee on track because of the depth and level of knowledge and commitment to this community that was at that table. And, and the, the amount of ideas that people had on how to advance and make better our planning, our community, our resources. And I just don't want that to go to waste. Yeah. So I don't know how to put it in the appropriate box. Would it be appropriate for staff to bring forward committee suggestions? Maybe.
Yep, I can certainly bring forward suggestions on way to engage the same representative group as well as what an advisory planning commission would look like. Cause that would be a bit of a distinct group that I wouldn't necessarily see all the same players. There might be a little bit more at large community representation on that kind of a committee or a commission.
I mean, I'm just curious, do you know of any other communities such as smaller communities and necessarily that has something similar? Is there any examples?
To the first type where it's more sort of community consultative or where it's very focused on land use decisions like the advisory planning commission?
I would say both, but.
Okay. So I've only really looked into advisor planning commissions so far. Although that being said, if what we're talking about is a tourism advisory committee, that certainly does exist in other communities. And so if that was the intent of the, the committee, that I can look for as well. If it's broader than tourism impacts, I don't really, I'm not sure what I would be looking for. And then again, towards the community, sorry, the advisory planning commission. Those exist in a lot of places. Courtaul Bernie has one. Other communities have them and they're, they're quite interesting tools. And we've talked about it a little bit as staff, just to test amongst ourselves, is that something that would be beneficial to our process? And yeah, I could, I could certainly see discussing that further with the manager of community sustainability about representation from the nations as well as community members at large and maybe impacted service providers where their voices are collected through a referral process, but they don't really get that interactive experience between each other to, to understand their, their points of view together. So that I have a little bit more of a box around. The other one. Only sort of.
Councillor Anderson first, then councillor.
Yeah, I'd like to have a real fulsome discussions in our, at, at council, what we're doing a little bit of input on it before we sort of. What does council really want? Staff would be just sort of guessing and throwing a bunch of ideas, which maybe that's what we need. But I don't know how to have that discussion. And how do we get, how do we get there? Maybe it's the strategic planning session that we should have that in. Maybe one of the strike task forces to deal with things as they come up rather than having a committee or, or commission that's ongoing. So yeah, there's, there's a lot of things that that could mean. So. But how, how does council better direct staff is my question. And I, I don't want to say staff come back to us and tell us what we need. I think we have to come up with a little bit better picture of what that is.
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to hear a little more about other communities, tourist advisory bodies or committees. I, my personal feeling is that this pandemic and all of the unique situations it's created has really highlighted for me that, that our management of tourism at this, this time is a bit in, is a bit crisis. You know, it's a bit like a crisis where people are very upset. The, you know, we're going to be momentarily discussing beach fires and things, things that have come up because of this specific situation. And I think that's something that I would, that I would really be interested in hearing ways forward. We're bringing community discussion in maybe at the more forefront or so that we can legitimize our, our discussions. Not that, not that we're not illegitimately discussing anything, but that when we talk anecdotally or we talk about people being, you know, frustrated or separate, dealing with tourism, that we, that we have some, some more input than just this room or the existing bodies, you know? That, that would be, I, I would just like to hear your input at some point.
On that?
Tour, yeah, the tourist, tourist related.
I think where I would start as a staff person would be asking, what data do we need to gather? Cause as you say, there is so, there are so many points of view that a, a council committee can certainly help cross pollinate that kind of what's happening in your organization, what's happening in yours? And how does the district fit into that? Or how do we all fit together? But if it is an operational, you need to, you would like to direct district resources in a different manner where you see an opportunity to, to spend our, our resources just differently. We would likely be looking to gather a lot of data about what is currently happening. And that's something that we've identified as a gap as well. And there are sort of initial conversations with the CBT happening about what data they're gathering for us currently. But maybe we need to tweak what indicators we're looking at. I think the manager of community sustainability talked about this at the last presentation, talking about the OCP where we have, we have not done a fantastic job on monitoring our plans and strategies. And there's certainly gaps in our knowledge about what has worked and what, what, what is happening outside? What are the numbers that we're seeing? And what is the truth versus what is anecdotal? Or what is it feeling?
Councillor Charles first.
I was going to suggest that councillor Anderson did bring that up about that maybe the strategic planning would be a really good way to have this conversation where we can first identify what our strategic plan is as a goal. And then from that identify what, where this, this committee would, would most benefit. And then have that directed as opposed to us just.
Yeah, I echo that. I think that, that bringing it to the strategic plan and then perhaps not directly to a council meeting, but to a cow for further discussion on, on what available bodies that we, we could have would probably be like the, if not the most efficient, the, the most thoughtful way to go about picking or choosing or at all the right body to refer to.
I would agree that it should go into strategic planning session and maybe we should let the facilitator know that this is going to be a topic of discussion.
Yeah.
Is a facilitator coming from Isla?
I think she is.
So I have some experience.
Yeah.
I should have known.
We need a motion for that? No, I, Bob and I are, I think Bob's still. He might've been raising his hand this whole time.
Talking away. He's walking down the street.
He can tell us.
He's silent. No, I'm, I'm still here and listening.
Yeah, I don't think a motion is.
Maybe we should get these motions out of the way because I can see that strategic planning discussion is on eight point two.
Great. So I'll leave that's managed. Great. I'll leave that staff be directed to conclude the immediate recovery phase of the COVID-19 action plan, including the community recovery task force. And that the feedback of the community recovery task force summarized in appendix two to the report titled COVID-19 Immediate Recovery Phase, dated September 28th, 2020, be received for information and discussion. Second.
Is there any further discussion? Yeah, call about all those in favor. Oh, it's non motion carried. Two minute recess. Two minute recess, Bob. Point one, notice and motion from Mayor Osborne and councillor McMaster regarding amendments to the outdoor burning control by law, 1071, 2008. And the recommendation is that the outdoor burning by control by law be amended to prohibit beach fires in the district of Tofino. And Mayor Osborne asked me to prospander this notice and motion because she was pretty sure she wasn't going to be around. And I have been opposing beach fires for quite a while. I mean, lived by Chesterman and see, seen how beach fires have got worse and worse over all the time I've been here. Beaches have been stripped of all the driftwood. Now we're seeing in Mackenzie Beach, I think there was over a hundred fires one weekend. We have tried education. And it just doesn't seem to be working. I think things have come to a head this year. And I think now the public has started to get away from that nostalgic west coast experience. We should be allowed to have a beach fire. So let's stop this. Cause I think you've all seen the black ash on the beaches and things like this. So that's the topic up for discussion. Yes.
So I, I understand the, the, this summer was in some ways exceptionally unique. However, I am opposed, strongly opposed to banning beach fires in general. I do not see beach fires as just a sort of nostalgic event for me, living here, raising a family, raising children, youth, young adults. Beach fires to me are a cultural amenity that's extremely important to west coast culture and life. It offers families a place to go. They can start a fire with their kids and cook food and enjoy the beach. It offers youth and young adults a place to go. That's very healthy outside. And so I'm opposed. Now, I understand that this, that this summer has been very unique. In many respects, we've had a lot of people come with beach fires. We've had a defunded RCMP position that usually patrols beach and deals with beach fires fairly successfully. And I have to admit, we've had lack of funding and lack of staff for bylaw, plus an increase in visitors that are, that are generally agreed to be less than, less than respectful to our beaches. And they're forced outside because of COVID. So we've got a perfect storm. And if you guys know that last year, the BC Forest Service removed the fog zone. So then on a normal year and last, if, if we were a normal year, we're exceptionally wet year, there would have been a fire ban this summer. July and August for certain. This was an exceptionally wet year that did not have a fire ban. It's very unusual. So you put all those things together and you seem to me, you get a crisis. And personally, I think my feeling, my value of beach fires is high. My feeling that this is a crisis and that this is in a crisis, I got a unique position. It's not a good time to make general broad sweeping policies that restrict residents enjoyment of beaches. Now, so having said all that, I do have some, some options. And I brought one here and, and I would like to suggest if, if people are going to support some type of beach fire ban. I don't know where you stand, but I would like to suggest that to consider allowing this type of contraption. It is portable. This one actually has a motor right there that blows air. You can't burn a beach fire, a beach wood in it. It has to fit in there, obviously, unless you show up with a chainsaw. It burns completely clean and leaves no ash and there's no smoke. And these are the new technology for campfires. And, and I think that now we'll see that most campfires through the province should and will start to move to something like this. This is a very advanced technological one, but here is one that I switched to for camping. And this is essentially the same thing. It elevates the wood. You stick little bits in it. It burns completely clean. There's no smoke because of the oxygen. And you can have a fire. It's environmentally responsible. It's clean. There's no mess. And you can't walk away from it and leave it. You just simply, it simply burns out. You blow the ash away and away you go. So personally, I think that the technology is here. The times are here and as opposed to moving towards banning things out of reactive sort of way that we can actually, in some senses, if we do something like this, then we can, we can be in, in a way a leader in, in teaching people how to have fires, campfires, beach fires responsibly. That's my pitch. Thanks.
I, this is a conversation that I have had previous to being on council from my role with resort associations. And, and year after year, we've had many conversations about it and seen how it's transitioned over the last. and seen how it's transitioned over the last eight years. And and see now even the resorts not to. So I disagree with, sorry, council law in some sense of the fact that I don't think this is reactive just to this year. I think we've seen it year after year. And the fog zone did help, because then there just wasn't any, so it was becoming less of an issue. But we can't rely on on weather to make decisions. And unfortunately, I have found, and previously I was very against banning them. But I have found if you do have something like this, which I think is a great idea, people monkey see, monkey do. So they see a fire, then they just start their own. And the regulating that, I mean, it's been an issue with bylaw, with RCMP, safety issues. It's a struggle year after year. And and every time that we've ended up having a a ban due to to fire regulations, everybody's just kind of side with relief. And you're still going to get it, we're still going to have to monitor it. But I, one of my questions would be to to staff, I guess, is is could we look at a ban from May to September? You know, during that, the same as kind of we do parking. That's when we do tickets, kind of like having those busy times where it allows for for the community to have that experience. But when there's a hundred, I mean, even not this year, there's often eighty fires on Mackenzie Beach year after year. And it's just growing and people know. Those are my thoughts. So I reluctantly am supporting banning it, but I I would like discussion on on some alternatives to be able to have them. And also, I should say, in in leading up to this, I I did reach out to the reserve community just just to see the gauge, because most of them have been kind of for it. And the only, the only people that were in support of keeping fires was was ten west of across the entire, everybody's like, we're done. So it's tough to hear.
Yeah, I have to say, I'm reluctant reluctantly in support of this motion. But I I you know, the the fog ban was removed. And I think this is a greater indication of the climate change that we're that we're seeing across the region. And I don't see contributing smoke and, you know, for smoke and additional fires to that as as being responsible as a community. I think we've, I think we've added two seasons this year, pandemic lockdown and fire season. And, you know, taking into account that that means that we have those with respiratory conditions that are exacerbated by smoke. We have seniors in our community. And we have a call from the community that this is, this is not, and I I have to push back against this being reactive to this season alone. In in the short time, in the two years that I've been on council, this has been an ongoing issue. And it has gotten progressively worse. And it hasn't gotten progressively worse from the same people. Additional voices have been added every year, saying that this is, this is no longer. And they they reluctantly would support a ban too. And I I've come about to the same thinking. I think it's responsible for the climate. I think it's responsible for our environment. I do appreciate the edit that it could be relegated to container fires. But I don't think that that solves the problem of smoke that that people are having necessarily. And I and I don't trust that this has been that that people are capable of doing them responsibly. We've seen unlimited signage, unlimited bylaw resources, you know. While we may not have chosen to fund an RCMP position this year, and while we have had our troubles with bylaw, a hundred beach fires on Mackenzie Beach couldn't have been rectified by one bylaw officer anyways. I think that this has gone above and beyond what we are capable of dealing with. I'm reticent. I I do enjoy a beach fire as much as the next person. I think councillor Chalmers edit that this be for the summer, which would ostensibly also be fire season, is a is a great suggestion. If that feels like too long for people, you know, having fires on the same day that we choose to have fireworks is also perhaps something that we could look at. And it would limit it to days of the year that Toficians generally like to have fires and be outside and be doing those things. So I think there's a variety of ways that we can we can craft a policy or or a bylaw around this. But I am in support of banning beach fires.
Who else?
Yeah. I I'd have to say that maybe this is an exceptional year, but the problem goes back along a long ways. I mean, at one time, it was actually huge gigantic fires that we got the complaints about. Cox Bay and and Chestermans, I know are more familiar with. So there's been times when when we had more driftwood, where we, people literally had fires that were maybe thirty feet high and stuff like that. So there's always been some sort of a problem with fires on the beaches. And it's sort of like used to be big ones, now it's the size of them, but the number of them. I I was sent a video this summer of Mackenzie Beach that I was quite astounded by to just see that. I can't even imagine how you could feel like you were enjoying an intimate fire when there's that many people on the beach and that many fires. It doesn't even feel like an enjoyable event to me when there's when there's that many fires on the beach. There's a video I got sort of get a sweep of the beach and it just looked, I don't know, it was it was crazy. It's like a parking lot of campfires. So I mean, definitely that has to be mitigated. The when it comes to Mackenzie Beach, all those people there from, well, maybe not every last one. But I imagine they're coming from all those resorts there. Those resorts could provide their own fire pits. I'm sure there's fire pits and certainly the campsites that that are there in Mackenzie Beach. And and they could be controlled by the businesses there. So I don't, I don't think it's stopping people from having campfires, except for some locals, of course. So we've we've lived a few seasons with campfire bounds. And I I never received complaints about, I can't have a campfire. I've received lots of complaints about the litter on the beach, the number of fire sort of debris that's left, ashes that sweep around the tide for, you know, months after summer's over. And we're receiving more and more of them. And and those are, those are documented and received by the district and and we're, those are coming more frequently. So I I I don't think that there's, there's any other approach. We've looked into having designated campfire spots on the beach. There's problems with enforcement. There's problems with how do people get one of those spots when there's such a competition for them? So many people want to have one. So I'm in support in into looking this, looking into this. Again, I think in in at at some point, the slower parts of the year, it would still be possible to to have a limited number. But we have to see how it works out and how it plays out. So, yeah, it's it's unfortunate that that it's sort of come to this point. But I'm also reluctant to do it. We've, we've looked into this year after year after year. I don't know how far back now, but it it seems like about eight, at least eight or 10 years, we've, we've looked into it time, time again. And it's for all that we've done, it's it's not having any impact on on mitigating the the impacts of and the number of beach fires. I don't know what other room to take.
Yeah, well, this is one that I first posed it to my, to my young, and I I appreciate councillor laws, because I I agree with everything you said in terms of the cultural significance and and the nostalgia doesn't quite work for me. We've been doing campfires for probably two hundred thousand years as species. But but I asked my my son, you know, last night about this. And and he looked at and he says, yeah, it was a problem. He was on Mackenzie Beach that night on a on a campfire, which he was thoroughly enjoying with his friends, a group of kids, and how much of the experience and how valuable that was. You know, and but he he fully acknowledged that there was an issue. And 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 right away, when I first read, you know, the proposed motion to prohibit beach fires, I my automatic reaction was to say, no, I I can't support a prohibition. I would like to look at some amendment to the word prohibit all beach fires and work towards a solution that didn't have this blanket closure of all, because I would be extremely reluctant to support a complete prohibition. So some format, whether it be looking at, we, it was interesting, because with with the with the discussion with several people, there was many ideas that came up. What about a permit system where, you know, and the complications of all of that? But where you have certain mess, anyways, we won't need to go into that. But the other part was the the seasonality of it. So we we have probably the ability to look at can we adjust a complete prohibition to a seasonal prohibition and what the value in that might be? And if if that would be appropriate, and I'm I'm hearing from several voices to to look into that as as an option rather than a year round complete prohibition to that beach fire. So that's where I stand. I I won't be supporting a a complete motion as written here, a proposed motion that's written here to prohibit beach fires in the district of Tofino. But I would certainly be open to a conversation around the the timing of when those beach fires would be permitted in the district.
My feeling has been to prohibit beach fires or ban them. And then, well, we have got that pause, look at what we could do, whether it's seasonal or permits or whatever. But I think there's, we've got to start to lay down the law.
We we did have, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, we did. And I can't remember who was in the reporter, was my discussion with Chief Baker, that we we had looked at that. You know, you had said that education hasn't worked. And I and I would agree this year that education, but in that 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 came about from a motion in two thousand and eighteen, some of that educational work that was being done with the signage in the resort. And that there was a a small but noticeable improvement in the twenty nineteen season. And that may have corresponded with some other events within the district. But there was seen some improvement. So, you know, I I can see a combination but but a strict, I I mean, it's it's timeframe, but it's like anything. Once we do this, then the ability to go back and and start looking at changing the seasonality. Are we going to get there this year or next year? It's taken, how many years have you guys been dealing with this issues? Yeah, so to to go back, it's going to be another 12 years before we reexamine the issue. I think if we're going to be looking at it, I would be much more comfortable having, I I wouldn't be able. I wouldn't be able to support a prohibition at this point.
Before I go to council law, two thousand and nineteen, the Chris, the bylaw officer, used to come in after patrol in the beach with the RCMP officer. And they used to say that they couldn't keep up with the number of fires on Mackenzie. This was in two thousand and nine, they weren't even getting to Chesterman. So there you've got full complement with staff. And they said by the time they get down one end of the beach, the fires have started up, back down the other end again. So I wouldn't, I would agree your education, say your education wasn't working in two thousand and nineteen, and there wasn't much of an improvement. Council law.
I I just, I just want to maybe reiterate or expound on something that this is a tourism related problem. And I think that.
I totally disagree on that.
I think the number of people here, I mean, it's the number of tourists on the beach from the resorts, we said that, Mackenzie Beach, you know, a hundred, they're not all locals. This is something that comes through and because of tourism. And I think my feeling, I just want to say this about tourism, is that as we start to deal as as a council, as a community, with I would call either over tourism or mismanaged tourism, or the burden of becoming extremely successful tourist town, is that that when we run into problems, we take especial care not to create policy that that either disenfranchises or takes away community residential amenities. I think we really need to look at that. I mean, there's other things that cause problems that we deal with. You know, dogs on the beach, we have a lot of problems with dogs on the beach. People have learned to leash them. We didn't say, well, a lot of people have, they have been increasingly leashing their dogs, which I deeply appreciate. And I understand, we don't ban dogs from the beach. Maybe that's a bit of a stretch, but it's, you know, there is, that's the sort of thing. We understand this is a valuable thing. We try our best, we do our best, and we wait, find ways of keeping that amenity here for residents. And I just think there are options that we can do that that we can mitigate. And I and I do want to say about the fog zone, that was, in my understanding, that was a Tofino led initiative with B C Fire. Well, the discussions were with Tofino staff and B C Fire, saying it's not, it wasn't to do with like climate change, it was to do with where are the stats for for establishing fog zone? And there weren't any stats for establishing a fog zone. And that was the basis taken away. That was a minor thing. But anyway, my point is, is that is that my feeling is that as we go forward and talk, deal with tourism and the effects of tourism, we have to just be very careful with with community residential amenities. I'll leave it at that.
My takeaway is we should leash humans as well as dogs.
Can I just ask, delete, so now Chief Baker had some thoughts?
I think he might be on the Zinko.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity here. I I definitely do have some some thoughts. I'd like to clarify a couple of things, having been in this role now for just over four years. I feel comfortable in saying that this year was not unique. I think what we saw an increase in this year was the level of frustrations that people were experiencing as a result of the beach fires. Having worked firsthand with the reservists and multiple different bylaw officers over the last four years, hearing the counts of how many beach fires on a nightly basis. This was about average for what we've been experiencing over the last few years. And so I think we have tried so many things. We've come to council before and talked about education. The the part about education is it's a really good program and it works really well. But when the average stay in Tofino is two to three nights, you're reeducating every single night when you're out there. So it's a, it's a difficult one to say, has it worked? And is it making permanent change? Because the landscape changes almost every day out there. I think there's some good points being made about whether it's visitors or local residents. And and you know, this is, we shouldn't be taking things away from part of the the experience of being a resident here. But from my own last beach patrol that I did a couple of weeks ago, there was only one fire on Cox Beach. And that was being hosted by two environmental researchers that have lived in Tofino as long as I have, over fifteen years now, that spent 10 minutes trying to convince me that I was actually incorrect and that you were allowed to have fires on Cox Beach and that there was nothing wrong with burning driftwood, that they fully believed that that was okay. When you move on to the other beaches, we speak to not as many residents as we do visitors, but it it the number of residents that are having beach fire issues is quite significant. It's resort staff, it's people that you wouldn't think would be out there just not following the rules. But it's it's consistent and it's among, it's among everybody that's out there. So I think we have to look at the rules being for everybody. And we are where we are because of the masses. And that includes both groups, visitors and and residents. I do really like councillor laws' suggestions of looking at options and not just necessarily banning it and possibly some of the tools that are available out there. We talked earlier today about propane fire pits. And and now that I can see the the apparatus that should go on the council table there, it looks quite interesting to me as well. But my concern, like what councillor Chalmers suggested, is that there is an awful lot of monkey see, monkey do. And when we have Chesterman Beach that is two kilometers long, say, somewhere close to that, the number of people that we see out there. the number of people that we see out there that we ask them about their fire and they say, oh, well, those people down there were having one. And these are times where there was actually beach fire bans and propane burners would be allowed, but other people a kilometer down the beach just see that glow and they're lighting up their own campfire. I think people have been demonstrating to us for years that they're not necessarily reading the signs that are posted. They're not taking the advice or the encouragement from the bylaw staff. And they're doing what they feel like doing in that moment. And there's an incredibly large amount of time dedicated to just managing this issue, which includes the garbage and the noise and the alcohol and all those, those issues as well too. So it's not an easy one to, to deal with. But I, I believe that I feel as though we're at the point where we need to do something bigger that will have a larger effect and try and get everybody's understanding and support on this one so that, that we can all move forward and have a healthier environment, a cleaner environment, one that we actually want to go down and enjoy, have a nice beach walk. And if we want to have a fire, we go back to our own private residence or the resort property that may have some on their property and we enjoy one there. That's kind of where I see things heading, hopefully in the future.
Thank you. Counselor Chalmers.
For a question for Brett, what do you think of the idea of it being summer only? Think that poses more problems?
Well, it's something that I think about a lot. And so here's how I have to look at this, is that people can be easily confused by rules and regulations when they're not consistent across the board. So right now, Pacific Rim National Park, you are allowed to burn driftwood. It's right on their website, I looked it up today. District of Tofino, we say absolutely no burning of driftwood. The province of British Columbia suggests that you bring minimum eight liters of water or a shovel in order to put your fire at the beach or wherever you may be. The District of Tofino says, we don't allow you to use a shovel. We want you to put it up with water only. We have some beaches where you can have fires and some beaches that you cannot have fires. And now we start looking at, perhaps we allowed it this time of year, but not this time of year. The more things that we add in there, the more confusing it is and the easier it is for somebody to use the excuse, well, I didn't really know or I wasn't sure, or I asked that person over there and they weren't really sure. So I think it's just getting harder and harder and we need to just roll things back and simplify it. So for myself, as much as I haven't wanted to, over the years, have a complete prohibition, I think maybe we need to go that way. And then over time, we can, we can simplify things and take another look at it. But the steps that we've been taking right now are not, clearly not enough for what people want to see out this way.
Counselor Anderson.
I have a question for Brett as well. In the years when campfires were banned by the province, or maybe there's only one year, I don't know. How did that affect the, the way you enforced fires on the beaches? So, so I'm just saying, we had an example of when, when campfires were banned on the beaches. Did that mean that you had to enforce that ban more? Or was the, was the, did that help with, with mitigating the number of fires?
It definitely helped because when you get to that point where you ban beach fires, everybody tends to understand it. When you're banning a beach fire because of the bigger picture, what's going on in the province, lack of resources, the, the health effects and that, people really do seem to understand it. We've had a couple of different things. So there's been beach fires or there's been fire bans in, in the province, which have affected Tofino. Those get listed on the government website and it indicates very clearly that campfires are prohibited out in this area. That's very effective. The message is very clear and consistent, both in the province and municipality. When we have our own initiated beach fire bans, it has been, you know, after starting the summer allowing it, and then we get to August and then we prohibit them for our own reasons. That becomes very confusing because that message is not echoed by the province. On the website, it still shows campfires were permitted in this area. Yet we tell people that they're not. So when we start a season or start the year and we say beach fires or better yet, fires in public spaces, which would include beaches and other areas, are not permitted, that's a very clear message. If you start the season allowing it and then try and pull that back, that's very hard to manage and very confusing to people. I don't know if I answered the question.
I have a follow up question for you. I know in one conversation you and I had previously that one of the concerns with bans is that people call the fire department then when they see a fire and that really increases resources and volunteers. Do you see issues with that, with the ban?
It definitely is more taxing on the fire department. This year, we had a number of calls for beach fires and we had to take a different approach from it. The fires were not a hazard, the fires were a nuisance. And so we went at it from the standpoint of, we don't need to respond for, for a nuisance. We have bylaw enforcement for those purposes. Definitely if it's a hazard, something's going to catch on fire, then we absolutely respond to that. So there was a bit of educating of our fire dispatchers and educating of the resorts and that, because it's often the resort community that is calling 911 when they see smoke from a campfire on Cox Beach. So with a bit more information, that scenario definitely improved. I think if we do prohibit beach fires and it's very clear and consistent, in the first year for sure, it's going to be, going to have to be heavy on the enforcement resources so that we can make sure and we're getting out there and that the message is clear every day and throughout the course of the evening. So that anytime somebody does light a fire, they, they find out right away that, yeah, it's not okay. It should ease off year after year as the message is just more and more known throughout the community. But what it takes is everybody in town and everybody representing Tofino being aware of this. I spoke to a young fellow that was working at one of the campsites or campgrounds this summer and he lives right out near Cox Beach. He's 18 years old and told me he had absolutely no idea that campfires were not allowed on Cox Beach. So I think the messaging just needs to get out there with better messaging and better signage and consistent resources out there, then we can get a handle on it and we can make a difference for sure.
Any other questions?
I don't know if it's so much of a question, Brett, but I have to say, I'm one of those guys. I mean, I've been walking Chesterman Beach for a couple of decades on a daily basis. And I'm the first one to say I would rant and rave as I got to the beach and, and the nature of the dozens of fires and the garbage and everything. I, I probably would have been the one that supported this very early on. I, I do still have a question around, as a year round prohibition, as opposed to a seasonal prohibition, what, I still see that as a very consistent message. And I don't see the, I don't see how a six month ban could be as consistent a message and clearer message as opposed to a year round. If it's from a May to whatever band, that to me is a very clear message. Once again, yes, it may be clearer year round, but absolutely I don't see a problem with having a seasonal ban that is a clear, consistent message, like you say, with all the buy in from all the people that are involved. I, I'm not sure I still fully understand how a year one is, is a, is a better option when we're looking at some of the issues that Counselor Law has brought up in terms of those. And, and I mean, I don't want to dispute, but I have walked the beach many, many times. And there is a very large mix of visitors and residents that are contributing to the issue on the beach. So I still would like to see the opportunity for residents of this community to have that ability. And you're right, they can have it on their own private properties and what have you, but there are still restrictions around, you know, many people don't have that ability. And, and I just see it as a difficult thing to prohibit completely, something that has, it has been a part of our culture. And anyways, I won't go on, I'm just to, to say that, to, I don't see the consistency in, in having a year round as opposed to a seasonal and what the, why there would be severe ramifications from not approaching it from that direction first. That's all.
Yeah, I think it's a challenging one for sure. I don't think there's any easy answer on that one. We still, year after year, get people that dispute their parking tickets after time parking starts in May and let us know that they didn't know that this is when the season changed and we should just void the ticket and give them another chance because they weren't aware. I think the behaviors that we see that are associated with the beach fires and the alcohol and the verbal abuse towards the staff that are trying to do their job and, and educate people, I think those pieces alone are, are really supporting the need for a big change.
I wouldn't dispute that, Brent, and I, and I know, I definitely know the challenges that are faced by bylaw. I, I, I've seen it and I quite regularly, and I don't dispute that. And if I thought a year round ban would do that as opposed to a seasonal, I would 100% support you in, in a one, just on that issue alone, to be honest. But I'm still having difficulties with a, with a full year ban. But I appreciate your comments and know that they are duly, duly understood.
Quaid.
I think, you know, I keep coming back to the comments that Counselor Law has made in regards to, you know, what, what is the trade off between being a welcoming tourism community and beginning to limit the cultural and social amenities that we engage in as residents? And, and what is that fine line balance, you know? And I, I have to remember that the, the letters that we're getting are from residents of Tofino that are saying, you know, despite all of this, I am asking for a ban. But the wiggle room that everyone seems to be suggesting about not an entire prohibition, but having a shoulder season, you know, the, the few tickets that will be issued, the fines that will be necessary for people or retracted for people who say, oh, I just didn't know. Like maybe that is the balance, like maybe that is the balance that we engage in. And we say that, you know, we're, we realize that, you know, from, you know, the first few days of, of April, when the ban starts to the last few days of September, when, when we move into fires, that, that there is going to be an overlap of people who just didn't know. But in order to preserve some of that, you know, that touchstone that we have as beach fires being a part of our community, that we're willing to engage with that. I say that knowing full well that it is nobody at this table who will be engaging with people on the beach. And the advice that we're getting from my law is that this is, this is too much and it's gone on for too long. So I, I understand that to have a complete prohibition of beach fires seems extreme. But Counselor McMaster did say initially, to prohibit them now and to reexamine what we can do, including a partial ban, is what the goal of this notice of motion is. I think it would probably be best if council also was mindful of the fact that we do have ostensibly another pandemic, quote unquote, pandemic year ahead of us next year, that we will probably be facing many of the similar concerns that we had with tourism this year. And that putting this ban and prohibition into place for the next 12 to 18 months doesn't preclude looking at it and better creating. And I do understand, Counselor Steer, that your, your concern is that we are, you know, 12 years from looking at it again. But I also have faith in a council and a staff that if we pass, if we do suggest a prohibition, that we can actively follow up as a council. And that is on each of us to better create policy around that. So it would, I, I reiterate my, my first concern or my, my initial position. I would support a prohibition. And then I would also, as a counselor, undertake it that this does not fall off staff or council's radar and that we continue to address it and to make better policy. And, but on the advice of staff and, and bylaw, I can't, within good conscience, do otherwise.
I, I, I could support, once again, I cannot support the motion as written. I'm being swayed more and more to a, a a motion that could be crafted that would include Counselor McQuaid, the suggestion that we had a definitive timeline for a review. And that, that as well, within that, which would now become a lengthy motion, that those, that not only will, will review it, but in that timeframe, that of course is going to be more staff time, to review potential options that could come up as such a seasonal ban or other mitigation options that are available.
I don't see a problem having a review. This topic comes up probably every year.
Let's have a sundown. Can a bylaw have a sundown clause?
Yes, let me think about that, whether we have specific dates.
Oh, does Bob have that answer right away?
I, I don't believe you can. And you're, you're essentially, it may be meaningless. You might be binding a future council. It's, it's something that we, we'd want to get back to. If we put specific dates in, you know, that, I, I guess you could say, you know, fires are banned from October 15th, 2020 to October 15th, 2021. That may be possible. Or council could, you know, instruct staff to bring something forward and at the same time instruct us to bring a review back in, in October, October of next year.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson, I'd like to say that first.
I, I think in the past, as sort of a year end, or with a season end, I should say, we've received a report from bylaw enforcement just sort of summarizing the kinds of actions that, that were taken and the number of incidents and the types of incidents. Do, do we still do that sort of annually or? So I, I think that sort of a review of the bylaw could come back as part of that sort of season end report. And, and yeah, it, it could be looked at again as part of that. I, I don't see that as being especially onerous. It could just be, come back as part of that report.
Even though bylaw's been short this year?
Yes.
Counselor Law.
Brent, I got a question for you. I mean, this is clearly has been a problem this summer, as every summer. Is our beach fires for protective services a significant problem in the winter, in the off season? Is that something that you have to deal with nightly, weekly? Or what, what is that like for you, dealing with beach fires in the winter?
Through the winter months, historically, we, well, historically, we stopped doing evening patrols, usually around mid-September. We don't have the same number of beach fire issues. Weather really helps us out in that regard. So it's not as much of an issue. There is more driftwood around through the winter months with the storms that are bringing it in. So when we do tend to hear about fires, there's more involvement with driftwood. And, but it's not a nightly issue the way it is when we have the, the volumes of visitors and summer staffing levels and all those pieces here. It's still there, but it's because of the staffing levels through the, the winter months, it's more likely that we're receiving emails about it the following morning with photographs of beach wood being burnt and those sorts of things. So it's, it's definitely still there, but it's not a nightly occurrence with the, with the staff interactions on the. it's definitely still there, but it's not a nightly occurrence with the with the staff interactions on the beaches.
Counselor Charles.
Um, I, in listening to everybody and thinking about my original idea with the the May to June or May to September and the idea with that, even originally, my mind was was exactly what councillor McQuaid said, is that having that transition period where the goal is to to fix that really that July, August and a bit of June and a bit of September, that problem. So if you extend it, it helps you bring into that. And in the conversation about doing a trial year, I I think it would be really hard to bring back from a full ban for a full year to try out something different, whereas I see it more beneficial as far as gathering data is is trying that that half year, seeing how it goes. And then it would almost naturally come back to council because we would get complaints if it's still an issue. And then if that's the case, we, either us or the next council or whatever could look at, then turning it into a full ban. But going halfway easy in the community into it, too, so that it's not such a hard takeaway. And then knowing that maybe if if we knew to, that that's the next step. Where I'm at.
I'm calling motion in a minute.
I was just gonna say, you know, I would support a, I could support a seasonal ban as if we could maintain something in the winter for the families and kids.
And the seasonal ban would be May till
and Thanksgiving, something like that. Yeah.
I think maybe quickly consult with Chief Baker.
It sounds like that's what, it sounds like there's a fairly significant fire beachfire season as it is. And I think we could just isolate that. And I would go with councillor Chalmers' recommendation to buffer that on either side. I could, I could live with that as opposed to a complete.
Any comments from Brent or the C A O?
I think we can bring something back. We can have a look at at in conjunction with with budget deliberations. And and looking at when we would bring bylaw or seasonal bylaw staff through bring something to council that's in the spirit of what the consensus seems to be here, which is a seasonal prohibition. And then see where it goes from there. From my perspective, the the winter is an issue, although it can be a different issue where people are burning much wetter material and the venting index is much poorer. So the, you know, the first, I think the first bullet in the in the rationale for the end notice of resolution is the health effects of smoke and those those don't go away in the winter. But if if this is seen as a as something worth worth trying, we can bring something back, whether it's Easter weekend or in time for me, a long weekend that the prohibition starts and then carries through until until we're into the fall months. If we could add a reading break to that, too, that would be great.
I, just to add on to that as well, I think those are really good points. We know from the last few years that Remembrance Day weekend and around that period is a really busy time. Easter gets really busy. These periods where we have some long weekends where people are coming up from the island and are engaging in these types of activities when we have the nice weather. They are periods where our staffing resources are low. And so it's just something to consider. And I think with what our C A O is saying as well, too, and us being able to look at when we may be able to start some of those resources. That will help because from the perspective of having a seasonal ban, but not being able to enforce it due to limited resources would be a really challenging position for us to be in as well, too. So I definitely feel that we've got some discussions to have at our side of the table and see how we can make it work.
Any more comments? Does everybody want seasonal ban or a long term ban?
I think a year round, sorry. Given all the information, the input, I just think that at this time and for foreseeable future, I would be voting in favor of a year round.
I'll call the motion that the burning control by law 1071, 2008 be amended to prohibit beachfires in the district of Tofino.
So you're moving then?
Yes. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. That discussion. Thanks, Brent. Thank you. Okay, point two, council strategic planning discussion. I presume Bob's going to be involved in this. Correct?
I am here.
Can you confirm the date? So we look at those dates?
So for for some time now, and council has been wanting to have a sort of a midterm review of of strategic plan. And the dates that we have canvas council on are October 15th and 16th. The idea being a few hours, you know, late in the day on the on the 15th, late afternoon, I should say, on the 15th, and then a full day on the 16th. And given the events of the last couple of weeks, I want to just confirm with council that that still is timing that you see would see as being appropriate. Knowing that that council will be one one member short for for that discussion. Alternatively, we could, we could wait until we have a full complement of council, all seven council seats filled. That will put us you know, probably into the late first quarter or second, early second quarter of next year. My recommendation would be that 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 council continue with the October dates so that we can use the October strategic planning session to inform budget deliberations that council is going to have. Or not only budget, but five year financial plan discussions that council is going to have beginning in October also.
I would support going early in October 15th and 16th. I believe if we wait till the late first or early second quarter of 2021, if we have a new new councillor. It's going to take them time to get up to speed anyway. And we're basically only looking at a year to a year and a half left of the term. So I think we need to get it done. But what does everybody else think? Hey, we're going to go October 15, 16.
Okay. Just as a reminder, Bob, and I know you've written the those, the the times were it was kind of split up in where it was an evening or a well, I'll say an after work session and then a then a full day session. Was that?
That's correct, yes.
And who's who's the facilitator?
We've been in discussions with Shannon Gordon from the Whitsor Centre for Sustainability. She did the strategic plan not two years ago, but came twice to do planning with the previous council.
And I'm sure you heard some of the discussion earlier about wanting to talk about community development.
Yes.
Restrictions. Anyone else have anything to bring up in the strategic planning session?
Okay, so just for councils, there will be a bit of a survey going out very soon from the Whitsor Centre to you, just canvassing you on on a number of issues. So please watch your inboxes for that.
Any other questions for Bob? Okay. Any questions and answers from anybody?
No.
Everybody's aren't actually watching. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you, Bob.